Could you please call the roll?
You bet. Mayor Weber.
Present.
Councilor Bata.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Ives.
He's excused, apparently.
Thank you. Councilor Lindell.
Yes.
Councilor Rivera.
Here.
Councilor Merworth. Councilor Vialcopter.
Here.
Councilor Villarreal.
Excuse.
Thank you. You do have a current president mayor.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. We have two items on the agenda for this meeting. I appreciate people making themselves available on short notice for a special meeting. Thank you very much. It's not convenient, but it's important. First is an information briefing and the second is a financial matter. I think perhaps Mr. City Manager, you could give us the lay of the land and turn it over to our team to carry out the first item, which is a briefing on where we are with the wastewater treatment plant and corrective action.
Great, thanks, Mayor, members of the governing body. Thanks for attending this special session. As you all know, we had an issue last week in compliance of our treated effluent that's caused us to reduce the amount of water that we were delivering to both city-owned public green spaces and to some privately-owned spaces with whom we have contracts to deliver treated effluent. I know that Shannon has been working to prepare a presentation to you on, as you said, the briefing of this issue and some remediation plans, so I think it's best if we go to Shannon and let him do his thing.
Mr. Jones, something is happening, but we don't know what it is.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd also like to extend an appreciation for the council coming together to allow me to present this issue. So, again, towards the end of June, sometime between June 19th and June 22nd, the wastewater treatment plant did experience an upset. What I mean by upset is the wastewater treatment plant is a biological process where we use microscopic organisms to treat the wastewater, and when they get out of balance, they don't perform in the way that we would expect them to achieve the removals that we need. So I'd like to say that there are several factors that we take into account when we start trying to figure out what's the root cause. So the first one I'd like to allude to and what I tried to identify in the memo, and what we've been speaking about for a couple of years, is at the wastewater treatment plant, nutrient limits were introduced into our MPDS permit. Immediately it took us into a nutrient removal optimization study. And so over the past two years, we've been learning how to run the treatment facility in a modified approach in order to target total nitrogen and total phosphorus. Well, I would say to date, total phosphorus, we've done a really, a really good job of removing total nitrogen. We're continuing to work on there are times, I would say a majority of the time that we are able to bring the plant to compliance. It's our ability to maintain that and do that consistently. But in addition, some of the modified approaches to targeting the nutrients have changed indicators within the facility, really dealing with concentrations of solids and concentrations of active biomass organisms. So with that being said, what I would refer to is it kind of tightens the boundaries of which normally, or previously, we had worked within. And so ultimately, when the, now when the plant is running, it runs really well, and we are targeting those nutrients. But also with that being said, is when things get a little out of balance, it does swing rather rapidly into an upset, mostly leaning to the loss of solids. So solids stop settling in our secondary clarifiers, they carry over the weirs, and that affects our disinfection, which is ultraviolet. With ultraviolet light, you need deep penetration through the water, you need clarity in the water for that to deactivate those organisms, and you get this ripple effect. So with that being said, what we're attributing to is an upset within the plant that required those, the solids begin, they stop settling, affected the clearness of the water, therefore impacting the disinfection and caused the organisms that were required to remove be under a threshold in our permit limits to exceed. Now, also in the memo, I alluded that wastewater has multiple permits, but for conversation points, I'll talk about two of the permits we have today. The first is our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, our MPDS permit, which is issued through the Environmental Protection Agency, and this is the water that regulates, this is the permit that regulates the water that leaves the plant and is discharged back into the river. So that is immediate concern and something that we don't stop discharging, right? We just work to get back in compliance. Also, the facility has a discharge permit from the New Mexico Environmental Department, the DP 289, which permits the city to use treated effluent for reuse. So that permit also has limits, and when those numbers were exceeded, we did stop diversion of the treated effluent. The main point was is so that we did not violate that permit. There's never an intent to intentionally or knowingly violate the permit, so that diversion was ended, and we're immediately began to make modifications to the plant to bring it back into compliance. So I will tell the governing body, so we have and continue to work to do that, we are trending in the right direction, the plant is settling back down and coming back into compliance. The issue with wastewater is it's, nothing is instantaneous, right? Modifications that you make can take anywhere from days to a week to see a reaction because organisms are having to adjust to that climate. So with that being said, we know that there were reuse customers that were reaching out to us needing really immediate resolve. I did not feel it was in the best interest of the wastewater treatment plant to, again, knowingly exceed a permit, and so we began looking at other, other, out of the box thinking of what, what we could do different. So I did talk with administration and the wastewater team about trying to use a different water source to essentially dilute the reclaimed water to bring it back into compliance, I would say faster. There were a couple of challenges with that. We were communicating with the regulators and keeping them apprised of everything we were doing, but it became immediate, became aware immediately, once we started working through the dilution, that the ratio was just, we were not going to be able to make the ratio. Ultimately, what we're seeing at the time was we were able to deliver about 500 gallons a minute of fresh potable water into the wastewater stream, which was about 5,000 gallons a minute. So we were barely scratching 10% of the flow, and that was not the dilution factor we were going to need. And so then, because we had the instrument, because we had the equipment in place, we did make a few modifications to our plan, we were able to isolate the MRC. What we consider the, the MRC is the Municipal Recreation Center Pump Station that provides treated effluent to Swan Park, to the Municipal Recreation Complex, and to Marty Sanchez Golf Course. We were able to put the flow into the suction side of their pump, and by the following next morning, they were able to start moving water into their ponds. So again, we continued to work on the facility. On Sunday, I was contacted by another one of our users in dire need. I worked with the Water Division and their Transmission and Distribution Section, and we were able to put a temporary installation of apparatuses in place to deliver water from a fire hydrant to the Centennial Country Club and to get them some immediate relief. While all this was going on, we're working closely with, with city staff to put together this special meeting that we could come before you have this discussion, be available to answer any questions, and just to get everybody on the same page with the communication. So again, I feel that was maybe a lot of information, maybe not the information that you were looking for, but I think with that, I would rather turn it over instead for questions.
Thank you. There are, I'm sure, a lot of questions that we have, just to get more clarity on the pace of improvement with trying to come into compliance, the movement of the water, the effect of the movement of the water, what we're able to save, what we're not able to save, the different variables, but rather than dominate the microphone, I guess I'll say, who would like to open some questions for Shannon? Zig, you want to go? Councilor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to clarify, from last Friday to today, are we moving in the right direction?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, yes, we're seeing dramatic improvements at the plant.
Dramatic improvements?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have any estimate of timeframe of when we might hit an acceptable level?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, it is my expectation that the plant would be in compliance in this current week that we're in.
This week? Okay. So the idea of mixing potable and effluent is no longer a consideration?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, not, not at the current flows that we're at, is, to me, is no longer a viable option.
Even though we're improving dramatically, we wouldn't be able to revisit that experiment?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, members of the council, one of the main drivers behind, I say behind my position, is that the wastewater treatment plant does run on what they call a diurnal curve, ultimately meaning low flows, right, midnight, 2 o'clock in the morning to peak flows around 11 and 12. In order to, we're perceiving as order to comply with our EPA and the blending of that, of that channel, I would have to blend at the complete level of all of that. And right now, that's what we're saying is not, is not be optional, so even at the lower levels, at a, at a, an eight to 10% dilution is not going to make the impact on the numbers that we're seeing.
Considering that we're looking at a couple of extremely valuable assets of the city, I'm assuming that this is the number one priority that your team is working on?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, I would say absolutely that we are, that we're sensitive and working very close with the Parks and Recs Department. I do believe that the teams have been available to do whatever they needed to do, but also keeping in mind that the wastewater treatment division is also working to bring a plant back into compliance, which really, in my opinion, really is what is our complete and sustainable resolve for the issue.
We've never had this happen before?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, it has occurred, it has even had it occurred this year. Actually, the wastewater treatment plant was actually issued an administrative order from the EPA that we just responded to, seems like a couple of months ago, when we brought the plant back into compliance. So again, it, it has occurred, and anytime that we've exceeded the permit requirements for the discharge permit 289, we have ceased diversions.
So, we don't have any warning of when this is going to happen, I assume? It just happens? I know that we're deep into trying to solve the problem that we're facing today, but that's probably just step one. It can't continue to happen, and we need to know why it happened.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, members of the council, so coming out of the issuance of the nutrient limitations, the facility did complete the nutrient study, which had recommendations. Those recommendations have moved forward, we're currently under contract with Corolla Engineers, and I would say they're approaching about 60% design of the plant modifications needed, not to just bring, to have the plant to compliance, but to be able to maintain that. It is our expectation that we would be under construction of those improvements, we're really trying to push the schedule up to the beginning of 2020, of 2020.
I know that it's extremely stressful for people at the golf course, I mean, it's a multimillion dollar asset that we have, and so, let me ask, in looking at some previous minutes, actually from Public Utilities from February, are we delivering effluent right now to the Downs?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, we are not.
Okay, so when did we stop doing that?
I would also say between June 19th and the 22nd, around the same time.
Okay, so what are they doing?
I know that they're reaching out for communication on what, again, what the city's planning, when, and when we'll be back into compliance, and when they would be able to take water. But currently, we have not done, we haven't done anything out of the ordinary for, for the Downs.
Okay. I would ask, the, after a couple of conversations today with the city attorney's office, if we could go ahead and review the contracts that we have with the Downs and with the Country Club? I think that those are things that need to come to us and be reviewed for future use and how we're allocating the available effluent that we do have. I'll yield, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Vialcopter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have similarly related questions in terms of not being able to forecast this issue, and I'm wondering, are you fully staffed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, there are currently vacancies at the wastewater treatment plant, well, within that division, there are probably a couple vacancies within the actual facility. Most of the vacancies within the wastewater management division are within their collection section, the individuals who maintain and repair the pipe system throughout the city.
So at the plant itself, you have some vacancies?
That is correct.
Are you working to fill those?
Yes, ma'am.
And then I'm wondering about the staff that's there, are they fully trained?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, our staff is qualified and certified to do the work, our, there is a training and development program that's in place, it is continually evaluated on new and improved ways that we can expose staff to that. We do use outside third-party training as well, they are part of the New Mexico Water Wastewater Association, and the school's facilitated by that organization. So I think that we do a good job of training, but again, we're always looking at ways on things that we can improve.
Did, and I, forgive me, because I don't really follow all of the equipment and biology and all that stuff that you said. I tried my best, but maybe somewhere in there, you spoke about our equipment, is our equipment up to date and working properly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, again, what I would say is, I do believe that there's always room for improvement on the things that we can do, and we do want to strive to do that better. I would also say that the wastewater management division does have a five-year capital, sorry, five-year master plan, they do main their five-year CIP, great advances in technology, and we are implementing those into the facility, right? I mean, it's under construction as we speak, so we're constantly doing that evaluation and making sure that we're investing into the, into the equipment of the, of the facility.
And so, did you in your budget request for the fiscal year we're in now, starting today, make accommodation for the plant?
Councilor Vialcopter, there are, so the plant facility does have its own budget, within its budget, there is repair and replacement line items that have been identified as specific projects to be executed, and so again, and that's the ongoing, really, asset management for that facility, and the repairs that need to be done.
So, how can we avoid this in the future? I, I'm not getting it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, members of the governing body, really, I think our, our main, our main path forward really began about a year ago with the construction of the anaerobic digesters. In addition to those, just the digesters being constructed, we did include on that project the infrastructure and mainframe equipment for the SCADA system, which is really the computerized monitoring and real-time data that, that a facility needs for those early indications. As part of our nutrient and optimization study, we did invest over $100,000 in instruments that provide real-time data into that project, and so those are things that we've currently done. Through the aeration project, which is being finalized through the design now, would extend that infrastructure of telemetry through the aeration and the secondary process of the system, not just putting instrumentation into the system, but bringing it in to a central supervisor and control data acquisition system, giving real-time data and indicators, and even have the ability to, to find to the control and process of the facility. So for me, I think absolutely this is a necessity, this is something we've been working to do, and our next project will continue to expand that, again, positioning the wastewater division to, right, to do things better.
Thank you. Before I move on to the next questions I have, I just want to ask the city manager to check into the vacancies that we have over there, because I think it's important to have our vacancies filled. Next, I want to ask Shannon if you know what the estimated loss per day in terms of funds are by having the MRC closed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, I would not be able to speak to Parks and Recs, but I know they do have representatives here that could answer that.
Does anybody know?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, governing body members. On average, per day, golf course revenue, we bring in approximately $7,000 per day, so that is impacting our revenue source, our revenue stream. And we do have, our, the municipal recreation complex, our league activity is currently postponed, however, that's a seasonal monthly basis of revenue that we bring in.
So, every day, we're losing upwards of $7,000? And how are we paying for the MRC?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, members of the governing body, we, at one time, we had our debt service, I believe, and that was paid through a, a different budgetary process, I believe, and right now, in regards to debt service, that is not being out, being paid out of our budget.
Okay. So I, I'm wondering if, if any of our bond ratings will be affected by this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Vialcopter, I would defer that question to possibly our finance director, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I can, I can get you that answer, I don't, I don't know it offhand.
Anyway, I don't know how Anyway, I don't know how long this is going to go on, but I'm sure it's going to affect something. And how much does the Country Club pay us for the water? Or do they pay anything? I can't remember.
Members of the governing body, Councilor Veale Copley, they don't pay in money, I guess I would say. They, they are supposed to, under the contract between the city and the Country Club, offer reduced green fees to the public.
Okay. Well, I, I think this is pretty serious, and I'm concerned, Mr. Mayor, that we weren't able to forecast this. And I did hear that we had this happen before, but maybe it was in the winter, when nobody plays golf. So it wasn't so, you know, so much in our view. But I think it's very serious, and I'm concerned, again, that we weren't able to forecast it. So I, I wonder sometimes what else is lurking. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other questions, comments? Councillor Harris, and then we'll come to you, councillor Rivera.
Just for Mr. Jones, I appreciate your explanation. I've kind of, as I listen, read the memo, but what I think I hear is that the plan is in a transition period right now. I see phrases like three-year compliance schedule, you know, nutrient optimization, those types of things. Are we in a transition period right now, at the facility?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Harris, I think that's a good way to describe it. We're, again, modifying our approach of how we treat the wastewater for the city of Santa Fe to achieve a different outcome.
So, I heard you say phosphorus, our phosphor number were good, we still wrestle with our nitrogen numbers. I don't know really quite what that means in terms of the solids, because I do understand you have one particularly good graphic here that shows how that system works. But, so is, is this situation, and I also heard you say that with SCADA and some of the other instrumentation that we are putting in place, we will be able to hopefully get out ahead of these situations. But how, how much of this situation is related to the, the transition in trying to meet the new standards with the equipment that we've had in place for a while? And I know we're changing the equipment, the anaerobic digester, digester and some other things, but how much is driven by trying to meet this new standard with some, not antiquated, but not, but it's just not the, certainly not state-of-the-art equipment?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Harris, right now, I would say I believe that that is a majority of the issues that we're facing. Again, understanding the limits of which that system can operate, being able to operate it on a tighter bandwidth, right? I understand the need for those early indications, those, those performance indicators, that is on our radar, and we're aggressively approaching how we put those in place for early notification, and not just early notification, but even preemptive and, and increase in that reaction time.
Okay. Well, that's kind of the way I see it. And so, with any luck, we'll get it back in balance to where we can start delivering the potable water, and then, long-term, wrestle with the contracts that go back to the late 50s for the Country Club and things like that. What about, so we have ordinance that requires construction sites, and I'm thinking about major construction sites in District Four, where they're getting ready to build 200 units and things like that, and it requires non-potable water to be used for dust suppression. So have we stopped delivering water for those practices as well?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Harris, yes. That is also our intent. Anytime that there's a potential exceedance of the DP 289, we do cease deliveries at the pipe stand that fills the contractor's trucks. We do redirect them to the county's fill station on 14, and, and then again, we, we do everything that we can to bring that back into compliance and get that service restored.
Right. And so, it seems like, in this circumstance, I know because the operators, you know, it's, if you talk about lost time and the money associated with, when, when you have trucks lined up to haul water, and they, you know, they need to sit there for an hour or two, let alone go into the county facility, it's a problem. So maybe, on an emergency basis, we might want to look at just allowing them to use potable water would be something we should look at. But anyways, I wish you luck. I hope you can get this back, get our numbers back to where we can deliver the non-potable water like we have agreed to do for our facilities and others. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Mr. Jones, I want to thank you for doing the right thing, and that's stopping the treated effluent from getting out any further, and then for bringing this to our attention so that we could talk about it and make this decision. So as far as the MRC goes, softball, soccer, and Country Club, not the Country Club, but the golf course, we have a way to water that currently. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Rivera, I will have Jennifer come back up and talk to the golf course portion, or the MRC's portion. What we have been able to do is deliver water to the suction side of their pump, ultimately giving them back control of their system, I would say at a reduced volume. But if you want to talk a little bit about irrigation strategy?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Rivera, currently, as Shannon mentioned, we are receiving water. It's coming in at a 20% flow. What that means is we are able to preserve our greens. We have approximately, we have 30 greens on the golf course. We're currently doing our best to, as we receive water in, into our pond, hold that water so that we can be able to irrigate at full capacity. On average, we need 1.1 million gallons of water to irrigate through the night at the sports complex and golf course combined. And if I may, I'd like to introduce Pat Brockwell, our superintendent, and he can provide some additional information as well.
Good evening. As Jennifer said, we're, we've been able to irrigate the greens and keep them in good condition, and that's, that's a priority. They can't tolerate dryness and bounce back like the fairways in the soccer fields. So we are doing the minimum to preserve the maximum value at the facility with what we have.
Jennifer, under these circumstances, assuming they stay till the end of the week, are you going to be able to open up soon?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Rivera, we feel that until we receive 100% delivery of supply, it would be in the best interest to remain closed. We risk damage to the turf, and so we want to minimize that risk.
That includes the soccer and softball fields as well, and rugby?
That is correct.
Okay, so all those facilities are going to remain closed until effluent is back up and running?
Yes, currently.
Mr. Jones, you talked about the, the Downs, and I guess they're searching for ways to get water out there. What about Swan Park?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Rivera, Swan Park is on the same distribution system that we call the MRC, so it is attached to that system. So the current place where we are providing water to the suction side of that pump can and has been diverted. Swan Park does have an onsite storage tank, so I know that they did take early, early precautions, and they did put some water into Swan Park, and I know that Jennifer's working with the rest of the parks team on, on how they balance the use of that water.
All right. So I heard a lot of mention about the greens on the golf course, but I want to make sure other assets are, are being treated equally as well, and being taken care of equally during this time as well. I will say that I hate using drinking water to water fields like this, and it's a, a good thing that we're not in a drought the way we were a couple of years ago, that we've had a great year and we have a lot of water. Otherwise, my vote tonight might be a little bit differently, but I hope we get through this quickly.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rivera?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, is there a, a plan to make parks and rec whole with the amount of money they're, they're losing per day? Like, we have an item on the agenda to authorize you to expend more than $60,000 for potable water. Are we going to, is there a plan to, for the, the other loss that we're experiencing? It's not related to water, but they, we heard that she's losing $7,000 a day each day she's closed.
Yeah, Mayor, councilors, what the next item is about, we contemplated actual expense of water. We had not folded into, into that, the cost of reimbursement of, of lost revenues. It's something we can consider, but it had not been contemplated on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Councillor Merrilworth?
So a couple things. Back to how we got here. It's, can you just go over that again? I mean, is it that the permits are more stringent? Is it that our infrastructure is not able to deal with the volume? Are we experiencing more volume? How does this, is it a little bit of all those things?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Merrilworth, so again, going back to where we were, so absolutely permits are getting more stringent. Each permit cycle, they do get more stringent. Each time the limits change, right, we go back to the board and say, how do we effectively and efficiently come back into compliance? Again, what is, what is the plan? And so again, that's where we were, right? And we are currently, so now we've developed a plan, and we're working through to execute the plan. The, again, there are need, there are infrastructure needs within the facility, but I feel that they are identified within the master plan, they're identified within our capital improvements plan. Again, that we have a path forward. I think the only thing that we're lacking now, honestly, is time, right? These are things that take, that do take time. Staff, I know, is working aggressively with the finance department and with legal on any way that we can do to compress time down, right? How do we, how do we move faster? How do we, how do we get to the end result? Right? The teams have been great. Everybody's outside-the-box thinking, you know, what are things that we can leverage? So I do feel that we have the momentum and we are moving. But again, being able to take, identify what are the things we need to do, put those into design and put those into construction, unfortunately, they just do take time.
So, I mean, is it fair to say this is deferred maintenance? You know, this is, just like we have with roads and so many of our other structures, just things that we haven't been keeping up with?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Merrilworth, members of the committee, I don't know that I would frame this the same way, because again, wastewater is, I would feel is a little more unique, where they do have long-life assets that they maintain. Again, through asset management and capital improvements, that they maintain that. But in wastewater, all of the permit cycles are five years, and so you live in these five-year sprints of, of a permit changes, how do you adapt, how do you comply, and what can you expect with the next permit? So even our master plan, and our CIP, and our financial plan, all revolve around that same, that same cycle. So that any given time when a permit is reissued, we have the ability to relook at our plans and say, are we still on the right path? Are there adjustments that need we to make in our planning, in our planning efforts? I do feel that that does happen at all levels. And again, so a permit was issued, we're going through the compliance, we're making the modifications that we need to, and that we're on track. Now, again, what we're experiencing is wastewater treatment plants, right, they do get upset, right? Things happen, temperatures, yeah, equipment failure, you know, illegal dumping within the system. There's all of these, these, these factors that play into that, that will upset the balance of a plant, and I believe that the staff makes the appropriate modifications at the time to restore that back to a steady state. So again, immediately, around the end of June, those modifications were made, and the plant is coming back to a steady state. It's just not something that turns around that quick. Again, and so again, we're hopeful and continuing to work through, trying to get back into compliance, right, even within this week.
And where are we in the permit cycle? Are we at the end of a five-year permit cycle?
The three-year compliance schedule for the MPDS permit is September of this year. So September will be three years on that permit.
And so, at that time, it will get more stringent from there?
So with the MPDS permit, the permit limits are already in there, meaning that's how stringent they are. The three-year compliance schedule is, I would say, where they give us a little more latitude of, as long as we're hitting our benchmarks and we're working through the compliance plan, that they give us more latitude on, on those short exceedances. September of 2019, that compliance schedule ends, and unless something else is done, we will be required to be in compliance with, with the nutrient removal, right? Or we will, will be...
So the bar, the bar is going to raise in September, right?
The expectation. So I feel like the bar's already been set. The expectation is what's going to change.
Okay, interesting. And we, what, what's the impact on the rest of the city parks? I mean, how, how many parks do, is it just this one distribution center, or is, or is it all our parks that are going to be affected by this?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Merrilworth, members of the, of the council, only the city parks that are watered with the reclaimed treated effluent. So I would say the majority of the city parks are irrigated with, from the, from the water division's distribution system.
So they won't be affected?
That's correct.
And then I guess I would, another thing to think about in terms of cost is a public relations campaign that the golf course is, you know, reopened and safe and was never, the public health was never in jeopardy because the right thing was done at the wastewater treatment plant. Seems like an important message to get out. And then I guess my other question is, so we're being asked to, in the next item, to appropriate money to buy potable water to get us through this period. What, how long will that appropriation, how much time will that appropriation buy us?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Merrilworth, as we work through those numbers, it does depend on how much water is actually used, you know, by the city. I believe when we ran those calculations, I was anticipating a 10-day cycle.
So, and in this memo, it says something about how it can take as much as seven days? Is that what I read? Under working solutions, changes are not immediately realized in the wastewater treatment. Each change could potentially take up to seven days before results will be noticed. I mean, are we, will we, are we appropriating sufficient money and a sufficient window for you to make these changes, or will we be back here in another seven days appropriating more money? What's, yeah, what, how, how deep in this are we?
Councillor Merrilworth, again, I do feel that the staff has taken the appropriate modifications. Again, modifications were already made early on in the event. It's not, that, you know, that we're waiting. We do see that the plant is, is on the right trend, and it's, and has tended to move back into compliance. And really, based on that was my rationale of a targeted 10-day, you know, compliance time. I'd like to think that I would not be back before you ask him for something else.
So you think this, this appropriation will be sufficient to your crystal ball, I guess, based on all the indicators you have at the moment?
Councillor, I would, I would say yes.
Okay. I guess that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Lindell?
So, did I hear Ms. Romero say that, let me just be clear. We've got on here 0.85 million gallons, and that's for the golf course, the MRC, and Swan Park. So is it the three of them combined that are getting 0.85 daily? Want me to ask again, Jen?
Mr. Weber, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Weber, councillor Lindell, yes, that is correct.
So that's for all three?
Yes.
And that's 20% of what we usually water?
The 20% flow comes from what we water normally, what... The 20% flow comes from what we water normally, what, what we, the MRC, Sports Complex Golf Course, receive daily. So daily, on average, when the effluent water supply is coming in at 100%, we receive 1.5, 1.1 million gallons per night.
Okay. So, why are we not getting 1.1 on the potable?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lindell, to be honest, that is the water that had available at the time that we executed the plan.
That was what?
That was the water that we had available at the time we executed the plan.
Well, I hate to sound so selfish, but it seems to me like we need to put enough water on the city golf course, Swan Park, and the MRC prior to taking care of some other entities. Do we not have the ability to deliver the 1.1 now?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lindell, so that has been posed. So I have been given consideration of if there was a gap that I needed to, to close on the water is how I would do that and what I would need to do. So I apologize at this time, but I currently don't have a plan to come up with the other 300,000 plus the other two facilities. I'd have given, I mean, again, stuff we're giving consideration to in trying to figure out how we would do that. I just don't have that information at this time.
I think that we're giving, we're selling the country club .7 million gallons a day, and that's the maximum that they, that's their 100%. Could we not kinda even things out a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lindell, really the way that we facilitated feeding both of these facilities is through fire hydrants. So then really what you're taxed with is, well, what is the distance from the fire hydrant to the point of discharge? At the, right at the country club, I believe the fire hydrant was probably 500 feet from the, from the pond, where to the suction side of the MRC pump station, there's over 1,100-foot hose run across the facility. So just the line loss alone through that restricts down what you can get out of the fire hydrant. So again, looking at other ways of how we continue to do that. But it's not necessarily throttling down one valve to create more pressure. It's rethinking, how do you deliver more water?
Well, I would like us to rethink that. And I know that you said that you felt like it was this week. The numbers that were being asked for here are for between 12 days and 22 days. I sincerely hope that this doesn't go 22 days. I think for us to be getting such a reduced amount of water during the very middle of summer on that golf course and on Swan Park and on the MRC, I think it's, it's a lot of risk to an extremely expensive asset. And I have, I have a lot of concern about it. So I hope that we are moving in the right direction. And if we suddenly are not moving in the right direction, that you will let us know and that we will come up with, that we will constantly be working on some plan to deliver more water there. And that, once we get through this emergency, that we have consideration of if this happens again, how we handle it better. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor.
Jennifer, so you, you estimated $7,000 a day at the golf course. Did that include, like, the Fourth of July holiday, which I assume is probably a fairly busy day?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Iberth, that is correct. So I looked back at our revenue last fiscal year. I've looked at July, June numbers as well. And on average, we do anywhere, a weekend, of course, more, but 7,000 to 10,000. 7 is, is the best or more accurate number to give, $7,000 per day.
And assuming everything stays the same till the end of the week, and then the effluent gets turned back on, how many days would you have to water at full capacity before getting to a point where we can start using everything again?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Iberth, if I could have Pat come up?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I believe that it'd be safe to open the, the course again and prevent damage after one full soaking cycle in an evening. It won't turn the golf course green again, but it will take the dryness off of the surface and mitigate the damage caused by traffic.
So the cycle, you mean one night, one evening?
One night. So it would be time to fill the lake and then time to, nighttime cycle, one night to irrigate it heavily. And that wouldn't be full recovery. I'd need several nights of full irrigation to really bring the turf back to, to the conditions that we expect.
And what about the soccer, softball, and rugby fields?
Be the same, the same. So it takes a day to deliver the million gallons, and then it takes a night to, to put it out on the turf.
Since you're wearing a different cleat on the other fields, that doesn't factor in at all?
Well, the, the wear and tear of carts and foot traffic are a little bit different, but it, to the plant, whether the, the crown of the plant at the surface is brittle or hydrated is the, is the difference.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we have any type of insurance to cover a situation such as this? I mean, we, you know, we reviewed our policy, we reviewed coverage not that long ago. I don't, I mean, I don't expect an answer immediately, but somebody should look into it.
Okay.
Fair enough. Can I ask a question or two, Shannon? I think the council is focusing on a number of different areas of inquiry. One is, obviously, a question as to how the upset of the system happened in the first place. Is there anything you can rule out? You can say it definitely wasn't caused by factor, one of the factors that has been mentioned so far. We've had people ask about, Counselor Veal Koppeler asked about staffing levels. We've heard about questions of technology failure or out-of-date technology or a breakdown of failure to maintain or upgrade equipment. You mentioned the issue of potentially a improper, something improperly being added to the system that would perhaps set the system off in a, in the wrong direction. Can you rule, I know you don't know what the actual cause was, is there anything you can rule out as we attempt to assess what caused this problem?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't feel at this point that there was anything that I would rule in or out. But seeing how that the adjustments that were made within the facility and how it's rebounding, I think does begin to point us in a direction of, you know, that again, it wasn't like a complete organism kill, something like a diesel fuel or something that would inoculate a plant. But you don't come back in a few days from, from that type of magnitude. But because the plant is responding and is coming back, leads me to believe that again, that this was an upset and not a, a killing off of organisms.
Okay. Walk me through briefly what you did this weekend to try to ameliorate the situation. I think your technical answers are very technical, but I think it's worth the council hearing what steps you and your team took, starting Friday night, if not sooner. Because I know, while it feels legitimately like there's a serious loss of an asset and a risk of an asset, I think it's also fair to say that you and your team have been working on this overtime. And it's worth going through a little bit of a clock to say what, what happened when and who did what.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, once we, once we finish vetting out the idea of how we can use potable water and where do we get the, the most efficiency from that, I did reach out to the wastewater management division and their plant staff, who immediately spent the better part of the day, you know, gathering materials and installing, again, over 1,100-foot of six-inch hose, making sure we had the ability to meter it, making sure all the appropriate other entities were identified, including the water division and their source of supply systems, transmission and distribution, so we're not disrupting that service. Once, towards the evening, when we were able to, to begin to look at the dilution, of course, they were on staff. When he, when we saw that that was not taking us in the right direction, again, they immediately demobilized. We reached out to the Parks and Rec Department, Pat, I was in communication with him. We redeveloped our plan. I did have wastewater staff come in the next morning at 2:00 during the low flow of the, of the plant, where they isolated the pump station off from the effluent channel. Pat was able to arrive, I believe, about 4:00 a.m. when we told him that we would have the stuff ready. At that point, he was able to start, start and begin to modify his pumping operations to match that flow. I was really surprised that, that they were able to facilitate that as quickly as they did and get in compliance. By the time I arrived around 7:00, I don't want to get there too early, they were already up and running. Water was already being moved and, and things were balanced really well. So our ability, their ability to adapt to a plane, to a plan change and have a new plan executed really within probably 10 hours was pretty amazing.
And on Sunday, you continued to monitor the situation at both the effluent levels and also what was being delivered to our playing fields and golf course?
Yeah, so once, so once that system was up and running, I believe it's joint effort between, I know, MRC, Parks and Rec staff are monitoring their pump station as well as our onsite operators were aware of. It was just making sure that they're watching the indications that everything was still running and that things were balanced.
Jen, I got a quick question, if you don't mind. What's, what is a, what is a green cost?
Mr. Mayor, a greens fee is $30.
Oh, what is the green cost?
I'm sorry, the green?
If we lose a green, what are we losing?
I'm sorry, $50,000 per green, on average.
And we have 30 greens you're trying to preserve at this point?
Yes, sir.
And are you feeling fairly confident that, given where things stand, those 30 greens will be saved?
Mr. Mayor, at this stage, yes, with, with the collaboration with our wastewater treatment plant and staff.
Thank you. Shannon, another question for you, if you don't mind. So the second order of business that's been asked significantly, consecutively, is what do we do in the future to make sure this either doesn't happen or we have an earlier warning system? And I take it that gets to some of the technology improvements that you were mentioning earlier. Could you just do another quick, as layperson's version of what you will be able to install so that in the future we'll have a earlier warning and an earlier response?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, definitely. Some of the things that come to the forefront of my mind on that project. So our introduction of air into our system is what allows those organisms to live. That system was installed in the 80s. It is functioning, right, but it's not efficient. So not only will we increase the efficiency of the facility, leading towards a sustainability, but in addition, we'll be able to add automated controls. Ultimately, in layman's terms, if you wanted to turn up or down the air in a particular zone of a basin, you walk out there and you turn a wheel, and you hope you get it right, and you wait for the results. Through an automated system, you'd be able to put a percent, a percent position on the valve and actually tie it to an indicator of a desired outcome, right? If your desired outcome was 2 milligrams per liter of air, that valve should continue to search, and the blower should continue to ramp up and slow down until you achieve that target, and that you should know in real time, meaning every 15 seconds, that system should be telling you what the, right, what's the status of that condition. So that's, those are the things that we're looking to gain, is that automation of reports and the trending. So when, so when an upset does occur, that we can look back through data and not notes or make assumptions, right, and have these indicators feeding information in that can help drive decisions on what it is we think occurred and what is our best action to remediate that. Again, I believe the staff knows their plant really well, and they're able to operate it, but they're doing it with limited tools. And I feel like it's my job to make sure that they're equipped with the latest technology in order to make those decisions, especially as technology continues to evolve and permit expectations are continuing to increase. I think, coming from a utility perspective, I'd also take the opportunity to talk to both wastewater, really, and the Parks and Rec Department on, on looking at the factors that talk about delivering water. I think that the water division sets a prime example of many years of history and intention on how you do that in an effective way that is sustainable in the best interest of, of its customers. Again, from redundant sources to conservation, to funding and capital, I think that they do stand as a model for the city on, when we think about how do we deliver water, and how do you do it in an effective and dependable way? And I think we can use that model as we move forward.
What would have happened, Counselor Rivera raised a very important point. What would have happened if this occurred last year compared to this year in terms of our ability to use what is a scarce resource that we all value? Would you even have had the opportunity to make that conversion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that I would even been thinking that way a year ago.
I also want to raise another point about the source of your, some of the equipment you were able to, to quickly obtain. I understand you had to access a significant length of hose and on an emergency basis. How is that accomplished?
Mr. Mayor, I was able to reach out to the fire department, let's say specifically Fire Station 7. I think there was a couple of individuals that weren't even on shift that were accommodating to the, to the transmission and distribution crews that were onsite and, and definitely made that happen.
So you really had a team effort with not only your organization and the Parks and Rec Department, the fire department, and others to get all hands on deck to Counselor Lindell's point about this being a priority. This was a 2:00 a.m. Saturday through all weekend effort to try to ameliorate the situation, save the greens that are first and foremost the most expensive loss if we had suffered a catastrophic failure of that grass. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. And I would also add that, that the team from the mayor's office was also available and in constant communication with me as well. So your staff did a good job, too.
Thank you. There are some follow-ups, obviously, that we need to do, including the questions that have been raised about contractual obligations that have been entered into dating back to the 1950s. And I think that's a point that needs to be pursued. And the pricing of those arrangements and the legality, perhaps even of some of those arrangements. So we have work to do, not only to check into the technology to make sure the problem doesn't recur, or if it does, when it does, we're quicker to respond and have redundant systems. There, there is the issue that Counsel Lindell raised about contractual obligations. But my understanding, to summarize as Counsel Harris did, that right now, the, the immediate dire threat to the greens has been prevented. We are able to deliver enough water to stabilize but not open our facilities. That you anticipate by the end of the week, if the current rate of compliance continues, we'll be able to shift back to our ordinary operating process. In the meantime, is there anything that would get us there quicker? Is there a variance at a certain point where if we reach a certain level of compliance, we're able to apply for a one-time variance from the state? And how does that, if that is the case, how does that look?
Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body, there would not be a variance from the permit. We do work very closely with the regulators. They really emphasize communication, things that we communicate. But again, it's not an expectation that a permit issued by a regulatory authority would be optional in any, in any way. be optional in any, in any way. And shifting of liabilities, I think, would be a definite, um, concern for the, for the state in New Mexico.
Great. Other questions? I think, yes, Councilor Rivera?
The follow-up comment, I know a lot has been made about the investment we have, uh, at the golf course, but I'll remind, uh, everyone that within the last four years, we've, um, poured over a million dollars into the MRC to try to get those fields back to where they're in, in really good shape. So, um, yeah, I agree with Councilor Lindell. We have to do what we can to protect, uh, those investments.
Point well taken. Yes, sir. Please, to the, to the podium.
Mayor, councilors, um, what I haven't heard is, is any talk about developing an alternative supply for the MRC, so that when this happens, there is a viable option in place, ready to go. Uh, and I think that would be, uh, an important direction to go. We are right next door to the Buckman diversion, and, uh, it seems like there are some feasible options that, that could be explored there.
I think, uh, the notion of redundant systems is very much an important factor because we are very much dependent on one system right now, and as Shannon said, if this were last year instead of this year, we would have no option. So it's important to look at multiple solutions going forward. Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions? I think it's been a very thorough and, uh, informative and useful, uh, conversation, and I really appreciate the questions as well as the thoroughness of the answers and the seriousness of purpose that people bring to this. We're all concerned, we're all, uh, very, um, eager to see the situation resolved, but also, I'm personally impressed by the level of effort and, uh, and creative problem solving that you all evidenced as a team to try to, uh, bring every resource to bear to respond in very tough circumstances. So I appreciate that enormously. So that takes us to item number, uh, five on the agenda, item number two on this category, and that is a request for an authorization. Uh, is there more discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the authorization and more than $60,000 for potable water, not to exceed $110,000.
Is there discussion?
Councilor Bata?
Wait, we do have discuss, we have discussion.
Just a quick question, how much water is that? How many gallons are we talking about? Or did you already tell us that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mayor Worth, I do not believe that I have already told you that. Just running that through once on the calculator, um, that is 18 million gallons of water.
Okay, thank you.
Up to. Any other discussion? Could you call the roll, please?
Councilor Bata?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Councilor Veale Copley?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, that completes this, uh, special meeting. I appreciate everyone's, uh, attendance and, and, uh, very thorough, uh, investigation and conversation, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Yes. Yes.